All right, we're waiting on a countdown clock. Are we ready, RJ? Paul, if you'll come up this way. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Meet the Candidate evening here at the venue. Our candidate presentation will begin in just a couple of minutes, but first, let's give a big hand to Jim and Jamie Neighbors, owner of the venue. Also, a big thanks goes to Alexis, because she helps us out a lot, too. Thank you, Alexis. But really, thanks to all you guys for coming tonight to meet the candidates and hear what they're all about. We love these kind of things, and this is an opportunity for you to get up and get in somebody's face and/or just ask them questions. What a group. Payne. Hey, I want to recognize a few people in the audience. Nope, not so far. The mayor and Mrs. Ryan Nielsen right up front. David Schmidt right over there. Mike Holmes is here somewhere. There he is, over on the side. Travis Smith's right up front here, too, as well. So, welcome and thanks for you. I'm sure that if you'd like to speak to some of these councilmen that aren't running, they'd love to have a conversation with you later on if you have some sort of questions. As well as our acting city manager, Jeff Peters, is right here. So, if you want to talk to him. So, before we get started, let's welcome our Okaloosa County Super private elections, Paul Lux, who will speak to us about the upcoming election.
Thank you, Mike. Let me get that up closer to my face. Can everybody hear me all the way in the back? Good. So, historic election for the city of Fort Walton Beach. We've never had this many candidates. We've come close, but we've never had this many. So, you guys have plenty to choose from. With me tonight, at the table at the center when you all walked in, my communications manager, Cheyanna Youngblood, is there. Give us a wave, Cheyanna. In addition to all her other job duties, she also helps wrangle the candidates, which can be a bit like herding squirrels, but she does a very great job. We brought some stuff with us tonight. Now, the sample ballots. Hopefully, everybody got one in their mailbox. We mailed them to each household, but if you need a couple of extra copies, we have plenty on the table. If you just want to take one tonight to jot some notes down next to some people's names, absolutely. Bring it with you when you come to vote. We have pens. We have little notebooks. Other kinds of swag out there on the table. Knock yourselves out. But a couple of other things I want to mention. Early voting is next week only, and it's in my Shalimar office. Or if you feel like the drive in the country, you can come to my Crestview office and vote there, too, where you will have to wait in line behind the crowd of Laurel Hill voters waiting to vote in the city of Laurel Hill election. But, so, early voting, again, remember, we have to pass by law 100% of the cost of this election back to the city. And so, for you, the taxpayers, we run this as lean as we possibly can. So, it is not early voting, as you're used to it. For a normal election cycle, where I have tons of poll workers and lots of voting machines, we do it in my office. So, if there's a little bit of a line, just take a little bit of patience with you, because, again, remember, we're trying to run this as lean as possible for the city. To that end, there was a change in the law that came into effect at the end of last year, and that is, what it did is it erased all vote-by-mail requests. So, if you know somebody who normally votes by mail, and they're like, "Gosh, I haven't got my ballot yet," the chances are, they didn't re-request the ballot, which is why we sent the sample ballots out early this year to remind people of that. But, so, if you know anybody that wants to vote by mail or needs to vote by mail, they do need, just have them call my office. The numbers are on the sample ballot, and we can take care of that over the phone right now. The other thing, so I mentioned early voting next week. It's going to run 4:30, uh, 4:30 to 8:30. That'd be one heck of a day. It's going to run 8:30 to 4:30. My staff has to have a little time to set it up and tear it down, so it is not 8:00 to 5:00. But, of course, my office is open until 5:00, so if you need to drop off a vote-by-mail ballot at our secure ballot intake station that looks like a drop box but is not, you can do that, too, up until 5:00 o'clock there in the building in Shalimar. If you do need, if you want to take a request form for somebody to vote by mail, too, we have request forms back on the table as well, if you need those. We have voter registration forms there. If anyone needs to change any addresses or update any information, you're welcome to do that with us while we're here as well. Otherwise, this is the sort of thing I get excited about, because I'm a political junkie and a political nerd by nature, and seeing this many people here excited about a candidate forum with this great panel of candidates. You guys are in for a great night, and I want to thank Mike and the venue for having me here and for hosting all of this. And let's get started.
Thank you very much, Paul. Now, on to the candidate comments. Each candidate will come forward and speak tonight about themselves, their qualifications, and why they're running. Comments will be limited to the approximately three minutes. We don't want to stop candidates unless they seem to be just kind of rambling on, you know? And then I told him that I would go, you know? So, we do have a countdown clock. My co-host, Bobby Neighbors, is managing the countdown clock, and it'll go down to zero. And, believe me, you can see it from up there. Following each candidate's remarks, I may ask one or two gotcha questions. So, don't take offense to these, but they're kind of things that I thought of or somebody called me up about when we reviewed your candidate materials. All right, hold it down over there, lady. Sorry. So, they're just, it's, these questions are kind of one way to kind of see your reaction to a question. So, it'll be real quick. Please limit your comments or answers to those questions to about a minute. So, let's get started. Brandon Bishop could not be here this evening. He had a family vacation planned for a long time, and he asked me to read his statement for him, so I'm going to read it verbatim. "My name is Brandon Bishop for Fort Walton Beach City Council. It has been great meeting many people and listening to many complaints and new ideas. As a councilman, I would first abolish the fire assessment fee. There has been many complaints from homeowners and businesses. I would like to make it where the citizens are top priority and their voices are heard. We want to make it where they want to live and have businesses." How would I get this funded if I abolished the fire assessment fee? That's verbatim. "I would stop spending where the city of Fort Walton does not need to spend. I will not pay off loans so groups can start projects in their other towns. I'm running for city council so I can be a voice of the citizens of Fort Walton Beach." Thanks to Mike for reading this, and please visit John Ferris at my table back here. That's Brandon Bishop's statement. Next up, Gloria DeBarry.
I have to bring it down. I'm a little bit short.
That's fine.
Just a little bit short, but tall in stature, let me tell you. I'm Gloria DeBarry, and I'm running for city council. I ran two years ago. I was defeated, but I'm back again. I'm the 13th candidate that threw us all out of kilter. Whenever Jeff Peters decided that he wanted to run for city council, I mean, for city manager, and if he wins, Jeff needs my help, and I'm here to help him keep it straight. I am very tenacious. I'm outspoken. I'm politically incorrect many, many times, but I am there for the city, for the residents and the visitors, even though my house is directly behind the sports complex, and I beg for safety for all of us, not just for the visitors, but for all of us, according to the Constitution, our city charter, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I want public safety. I want our fire department. I want our police department and all the, I want them to be there whenever I need them. Thank God, I've never had to call, and I hope I never have to. But I want them to live and work within their budget, and not just say, "I want this and I want that. I want a Mercedes-Benz fire truck." How about a Ford or Chevrolet? You're going to get rid of it in 10 years, anyway. How about using grants, grant money? I'm a grant writer. You have grant writers on staff. I show them five minutes out in the parking lot before the meeting. "Hey, here's a million-dollar fire truck. You have to ride." But so many times, I've heard it over and over and over again from the city staff. "We want the money, but we don't want to be told how to spend it." Well, I want my money, too, but I have to pay taxes, and I want to see how my money is being spent. We're having trouble with our city staff. I don't know if it wasn't advertised, it wasn't told. I know the city morale has been really, really, really low for the last several years, and that's one of the reasons I've been going to all the meetings and listening and listening. Well, the last quarter of this last year, the fire chief resigned, two years short of retirement. Several firepeople resigned. The city, the chief of staff resigned. The PR person left. She was only there four months, went to Panama City, I heard. The city manager resigned. He's now working, I understand, with a private sector waste management. And then the CFO resigned. That's when I decided I'm going to run again, and here I am. Thank you. March 14th, and I'm reusing my campaign stuff from two years ago. March 14th.
... educational background.
Oh, I have, oh, can I speak?
Yep.
I have a, I have a master's. I'm a subject matter expert. I write competency exams for state boards, not only here in the United States but throughout the world. I've worked in every country except Mali. I'm a nurse without borders.
That's fine, Mr. Barry. She asked about your educational background. Once again, folks, if you have questions of the candidates, you said, "No, no, I haven't asked you a question yet." Oh, yeah, I got one for you. Oh, yeah, stick in there. So, if you all have questions that they don't cover, then instead of just yelling out and taking up their time, we're going to have a half an hour after we're done with these formal statements that you can go back and talk to them at the table. We hope that many of these statements bring questions to you, and then you can go back and visit with them then. But yes, that was a good question, and it's okay, but you got to go in there. So, Mr. Barry, I'm very, very glad to hear that you said that you're going to work with Jeff Peters, because you have been very critical of him.
Very critical.
Very critical of him. Matter of fact, the other night, in the Republican forum, you said he was just a good old boy.
He's a good old boy.
You said that he was a bad manager.
I said he is not a good manager.
Okay, well, okay, not a good manager.
He's not a good manager, and I will, I will stand by that, yes.
Okay, so if you're, so, okay.
He's good with sports, yes.
I got you. So, if, as you know, the current city council is probably going to choose the next city manager before you're elected.
That's what Mr. Holmes said at the last.
Right, well, so, here we go. Let me just finish, and you can go ahead. So, if you're elected, after saying all these things, are you going to be able to put away this animosity towards him and work together for the good of the city?
You betcha.
Okay, thank you very much. Gloria DeBarry.
I have a, I have a double master's. I have a, a master's in nursing, and I'm also, I'm a...
Okay, all right. So, you may take a seat. You're done, thank you very much. Again, folks, if you have a question afterwards, then you can go back to the tables. You're done, Mr. DeBarry.
Okay, I'm done.
All right, Mr. Hartman's next.
How's everybody doing? This is great that so many people came out. This is super exciting to get to talk to everybody. My name is Ryan Hartman. I'm running for Fort Walton Beach City Council. I was born and raised right here in Fort Walton. I went to Kenwood Prior and graduated Choctaw in 2003. After I graduated, I joined the Air Force and spent six years as a medic, and I do have a combat deployment to Afghanistan. For almost 17 years, I've been married to my lovely wife, Darris, and we have three beautiful daughters, all three of which are involved in their school sports, beachside community church, and volunteer within the community. My time in the Air Force gave me the necessary skills to be successful in life. During my service, I learned how to be a leader, an effective communicator, and complete tasks in the most efficient and effective manner. Throughout my career, I had many leadership positions, whether it was an element leader during basic training, my time spent with the Army in Afghanistan, or my five years as a shift leader in the ER at Keesley Air Force Base. I earned all these positions due to my job knowledge, my ability to clearly convey objectives and information while working towards a goal. As important as a skill as leadership is, budgeting is also important. My wife has owned her own photography business for 15 years. During that time, I've been responsible for her finances. I've helped her budget for new equipment, assisted in securing new funds when necessary, and helped her manage her income so her business meets its needs financially and remains profitable and beneficial to our family. As a household that depends on a small local business, I understand the impact of our local leaders' decisions and what they have effect on our local businesses. One of the most important qualities as councilman is open communication with our residents and businesses. A key benefit of open communication is being able to bring people together early in the situation so that they can help be a part of it. If the community helps write it, they will be there to support it and see it through. If we try to achieve goals without the support and the engagement of the community, we'll fail before we begin. The main message I've heard throughout my interactions with the community is that our citizens and our businesses want and need communication with the city. As I told a gentleman I spoke to this weekend, no one has ever made a bad decision based on open and honest communication. If the goal is to get people to come together and move forward in a similar direction, establishing relationships is extremely important. As a councilman, I want to ensure that Fort Walton is a wonderful place for families to live, tourists to visit, and our businesses to operate. Thanks for, Mr. Minnick, and the venue for hosting this evening tonight, and I appreciate
Mr. Hartman, your campaign materials indicate you worked at part-time EMT with the Ocean City Wright Fire Department. Please comment on how important it is to maintain an excellent working relationship between the fire departments and how you might, if elected, facilitate that.
So, that's actually great, because one of the most important things is, our area is so small, and our fire departments work together so often, that our city might respond first in our area, but oftentimes, Ocean City is the second call, especially on major incidents, and vice versa. Ocean City responds, and they often request the help of our fire department. So, being able to have our departments work together, make common goals, and provide the city with top-quality service is one of my main goals, especially since the emergency services are near and dear to my heart.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hartman. Jason Harwell.
So, my name is Jason Harwell, and I am running to be your next Fort Walton Beach City Councilman. First, I would like to say thank you for having this event and platformed, giving us a voice, to be able to be heard a little bit louder. So, one of the reasons why I am running for city council is because I believe if you want to see change and you want to make a difference, you have to put yourself in a position to do that. I'm not known by my name, Jason Harwell. I'm known throughout the community as the founder of Erase the Trace Okaloosa, through that organization where most of my movements is made. You can see that from the bottle bins on Okaloosa Island to the storm drain mural painting projects and partnerships with the city and the Cultural Arts League. I'm all about community. Why? Because I'm out there in the community, engaging the citizens, listening to their concerns, and doing what I can in the shadows to bring that to light. So, a lot of people come to me because they know that I know other individuals that can answer their concerns and questions, but they don't know themselves how to contact them. So, I would like to be a conduit for the citizens to our elected government so that their voices can be heard and brought to the forefront, and at the same time, help move the environmental efforts within not only Fort Walton Beach but Okaloosa County. So, my daughters, I have two of them that live with me full-time. Eleanor is my eight-year-old. She's sitting over here. My other one is Emma. She is seven. They both go to Edwin's Elementary. And I am looking to invest more into this community that I raised my family in so that it is here and cleaner and a better place to live when they're older trying to raise their children. I believe teamwork makes the dream work, and my background in history and the way that I was raised, I believe that gives me a different and unique quality to be able to connect the citizens on a different, more personal level, and be able to relate to them their hardships and find understanding in a way to be able to make their needs met, and at the same time, respecting the taxpayers and every other citizens. I'm all about remaining freedoms for each individual, at the same time, protecting all parties involved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Harwell, going through your campaign materials is well chronicled on the remarkable transformation you've made and what a great citizen you are in our community now. I don't see much about your qualifications to be a decision-maker and councilman, so please share some of your life experiences where you would talk about that and talk about how you're budgeting and managerial experiences.
Okay, so, as far as that, I know that a lot of people look for certain qualifications, and I might not be that one if those are the qualifications you were looking for. I'm totally different. My educational background is ninth-grade education with the GED. I was not military. I did not serve. Everything that I know today, I was self-taught. So, if you want to know what I can do, all you have to do is just watch me, because I'm proceeding in life. I'm not allowing anything to hold me back. A lot of people say that I should be cautious when mentioning my past. I am a convicted felon. I have a full pardon from the state of Georgia. That was almost 20 years ago. I'm not embarrassed of my past. It's who made me who I am today. It's why I'm standing before you. It's why I'm advocating for change, and I'm leading the charge. I might not be qualified in the aspects that you might be looking for, but I'm here to make a difference, and if you put your vote in me, I won't let you down.
Good evening, everyone, and I'm Amy Jamison. All right. And due to my excitement and passion for this city, I am going to read this because I don't want to leave anything out. I'm a proud citizen of the Fort Walton Beach, and I have the honor of serving on city council for eight years. I am a citizen that once just appreciated my garbage being picked up, my toilets flushing. I had water coming out of the faucets and having good roads to drive on. Well, on the dais, my passion for our city during a discussion in a meeting came out. I made a statement stating I was once an ignorant citizen, which referenced what I had just mentioned. Everything worked, didn't matter how or why, it all worked, and I just did my own thing. Maybe I should have used the word uninformed, but I was referencing only myself in that statement. Unfortunately, so many people have taken it out of context, and that's okay. I know what I meant to better describe my lack of understanding of how the city worked. I truly am sorry that so many people have taken this out of context. That was never meant to hurt anyone. Through my love of this city, the residents, employees, there are large projects that I have been a part of from the start, since first elected in 2013. The landing renovation, Brooks Bridge Downtown Master Plan, Round the Mound, that I would love to continue to guide us through these projects to completion. During my elected time, of the few projects that I am very proud to have been a part of, was the consolidation of multiple smaller rec centers into a large rec center with an amazing sports complex. The city's recycling program. Participation in the renovation process for the landing, downtown master plan, additional pickleball courts that are, stay pretty full, and throughout the city, and the start of the neighborhood sidewalk program, which I would like to see more emphasis placed on with this project. While volunteering and speaking in our community for the past 25 years with Mothers Against Junk Driving, I have worked with the first responders on a regular basis, and as a council person, I promise my commitment to support our first responders, who dedicate themselves to the community for all our safety needs and for saving lives. My moral compass is my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. There are many factors when I consider making my final decisions before I vote, including input from received by you. I'm going to continue advocating for you and my beliefs, understanding that I am not a person who takes everything for granted and loves working for you. I, in the past, have attended many training classes through the Florida League of Cities so that I could be the best possible steward selected by you. I have expanded my knowledge on what it takes to be a good elected official and would love the opportunity to continue to serve our great city, not only because this community has given so much to me over the last 30 years, but quite simply because I love this city. Thank you for your support and for allowing me to continue to serve you.
Took my question.
I'm sorry. If you would have told me, I would have known what your question was.
Well, you kind of knew. So, a couple of times, you had a couple of off-the-cuff remarks that were taken a little bit wrong, right?
Yes.
A little bit about Ocean City Wright Fire Department was another one. So, my question is this. Did you learn from that? And if you get re-elected, will maybe take a little more measured approach this time?
I'll try to keep my enthusiasm down.
Thank you very much. All right, next, before Bryce comes up, you can come on up, but I want to recognize the kids' table over here on the far side. The cool part about this tonight is that, well, you could bring your family to this event and your children, and they can learn about their community as well, and I think that's really wonderful, and I think that all of those but one or two are Jeters, anyway,
Those are not all my kids, but yes, I do have five kids. I'm sure some of you got your mail out and saw them all, but thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you for everyone who had a hand in putting this event together. It's great. It's great to get to know some of you guys and earn some, earn some more votes. My name is Jared Bryce Jeter. I grew up right over there on Okaloosa Island. I attended Fort Walton Beach High School. I graduated in 2002, and I, like everybody else in this room and up here, love this community and just want to see it get 1% better, just like we all do as a person every day. That is my beautiful wife, Franny, over there. We have been married 11 years. We do have five kids together. Three of them are here with us tonight. Two of them stayed home so that this didn't turn into a romper-room event.
That's what you think.
Our oldest three attend Elliott Point Elementary School. Our youngest two attend First Night of Methodist preschool right here in downtown Fort Walton. And me and my wife and my family are all the kind of people, we want to get involved. We want to help. If our kids go to school there, I want to dive in headfirst. I want to volunteer, and I want to donate, and I want to, I want to see the playground be the best place it can be. If my kids play sports there, I want to dive in headfirst. I want to coach. I want to help clean up the park. I want to get ready for opening day this Saturday. I want to be involved. So, why not, if we're all going to live in this great community and watch our kids grow up in it, why not roll our sleeves up and get our hands dirty and get involved? We can all say we're too busy, and we can all say, "We'll do it next year," but now is the time. Now is the time to make it happen. My two best friends are in the room tonight as well, John and Beth Jeter, my mother and father. They taught me a lot of stuff. They ended up, Bobby paused that. You going to add 10 seconds back on there?
No.
They taught me a lot of good stuff. My dad taught me how to wake up and go to work every day and work hard. My mom's word, she preached to all of us, all four of us, me, my brother, my older sister who is here, my younger sister, balance, balance between work and play, balance between planning and producing, balance in everything in life, balance in saving and spending. And I look forward to applying all of those things when I'm on city council, so hopefully I'm fortunate enough to earn all of your all's vote and serve on city council. You want someone with energy and enthusiasm and the willingness to communicate and the ability to compromise? That's me. You know, we can all list our accolades and our accomplishments and our community service and our volunteer hours, and those are great. Those are all great things, and they're all important pieces to the puzzle that make our community great. But what we need on city council is we need leaders. We need business-minded leaders that understand how to see a project from start to finish. They need to understand how to maintain a budget, how to maintain hundreds of employees, and how to work together with your customers, which is all of our citizens, to come together, all groups, all walks of life, and make the place better. The next five or 10 years shape this community for the next 50 or 60. We need to, we need to go to the next play and the next game and make some great things happen for all of us in this room and the next generation. So, again, I ask to earn your vote on March 14th. My name is Jared Bryce Jeter, and at Fort Walton 2.0, come on, let's go. That's where we're going.
Mr. Jeter, I see from your campaign materials and contributions that you do have the Watch Group's endorsement, the Fort Walton Beach Watch Group. So, talk about your relationship with the Watch Group and how much influence they might have if you are elected.
I'm glad you saw that campaign report. Thank you. If anybody else in here saw that campaign report, I had the endorsement of a lot of people in this room, not just one specific group, not just one specific organization. I've not raised a lot of money. I had a lot of people reach out to me because of what I just told you. Me and my wife operate a lot of businesses and a lot of properties in this community, and people know that, and they see that, and the track record speaks for itself. So, the majority of those people on that list reach out to me. So the majority of those people on that list reach out to me because they trust me and they know me and they know the track record and they know how and we can get things done. So I stand beside anybody who contributed on that list because everyone who contributed on that list has also cared enough to make this community better. And everyone in this room cares enough to be here tonight and hopefully go vote on March 14th. That's the same thing we're up here doing, the same thing you're doing. Some of us do it in different ways. Some of us do it by running to get elected, some of us do it by writing a check, some of us do it by volunteering our time and our hours. And I'll also go by and say by that, that is part of it. If you want to get things done, you got to raise the money and then you got to run a campaign under budget. So if we go to Tallahassee and we want to get some money to make some great things happen in this community, I want somebody who knows how to raise some money and I want somebody who knows how to budget regardless of where it comes from. It's a great thing.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Nathan Kelly. I had a beautiful speech lined up. If anybody wants to hear it, I'll tell you later. Imagine having a job, day one, you know nothing. You know enough to get a couple hundred votes to have a seat at a bench. Now imagine hundreds of people watching every move you make. It's all on video, there's no secrets. Now, you might imagine that during that time, you probably could say some stupid things. You could maybe make some not great decisions. Overall, you may not agree with everything that I've said and done. I'll give you that. You may, you know, great if you do. But what I would like to do now is not talk about the bad. I would like to talk about some good things. Over the last four years, Fort Walton Beach City Council has lowered the millage rate from 5.76997 to 4.9999. What does that mean to you? That is lowering taxes for the people in the back. We have fully funded our police and fire departments. In 2008, we, as a city, took a huge hit and the first thing that was cut was police and fire. And we've been working to rebuild that since then and we're finally back. We have moved around the mound, a 1970s project, I heard. I wasn't born then, but something that they've been talking about since 1970, we've now moved up and there was a news article today about a PD&E study that's being done. That's the process. We've reduced utility impact fees. We voluntary annexed 50 acres. We did a major development order for Freedom Tech Park. We voted to expand our parks and recreation. We now have pickleball. We just voted for landing renovations, $2.4 million for phase one and more to come there. We've created Workforce Housing Initiative Fund of $1.5 million. And between myself and city staff and other council members, we've also went to Tallahassee and brought back over $11 million back to this area from state appropriations. So those are some of the good things. Let's focus on that.
Mr. Kelly, you mentioned lowering the millage rate, but really that's just a part of the process, right? And you're lowering the millage rate, did you ever go back to the rollback rate?
No, sir. No, we did not.
And could you talk about the impact that maybe the fire assessment fee and the half cent sales tax had to bring that millage rate back?
I mean, obviously, you know, we've had many, many buckets of money that have come in over the past couple of years that have helped. And I mean, I'm sure you're going to hear tonight that, you know, the budget went from $37 million 10 years ago to now it's $57 million. All of this is true. However, there's a whole lot more to it and if you all, any one of you want to sit down, I will gladly, I have my budget book in the back. Somebody made fun of me earlier for having it and I'm like, I bring it everywhere. But, you know, so I can explain where that money is and where it's going. And so it's a very loaded question that I probably can't answer in 15 seconds.
All right. Thank you very much.
Put this here because I tend to use my hand sometimes. All right, good evening, everybody. I'm Kirby Locklear. I'm Kenwood resident and I'm running for reelection to the Fort Walton Beach City Council. I want to thank all the sponsors for this lovely facility and giving me the opportunity to reintroduce myself and I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. What a wonderful turnout. So who am I? I was born in North Carolina. I was raised in Baltimore, Maryland and from there I entered Air Force Academy. I graduated and was commissioned as second lieutenant and I was so lucky to be able to be stationed right here at Hurlburt. And one thing about special ops, sometimes you get the homestead quite a bit. So I spent most of my 22 years right here in Fort Walton Beach. And between Hurlburt and Eglin, I flew the AC-130 Gunship and I flew the MC-130 Combat Shadow overseas in operational deployments. After I retired from active duty, I continued to serve the military as a defense contractor testing special operations aircraft. So why did I run four years ago? And why do I want to run again? I can sum that up four years ago into one word and that word is service. Ever since I swore allegiance to the Constitution at the age of 17 years old, and that was almost 48 years ago, I promised that I would serve my country and serve my community. And Fort Walton Beach is my home. I have raised children here. I have grandchildren here. I even have a brand-new granddaughter here. This is home. I'm all about living here and I want to make it a better place. My motto is service before self is ingrained in who I am. We have accomplished a lot of great things over the last four years. We expanded recreational opportunities. We have funded our, fully funded our public safety and lowered the military rate three times. Over the next four years, I will ensure that the fire department remains a Fort Walton Beach Fire Department and fully fund our police department. We will complete the landing renovations and I will fight for affordable housing. We help Fort Walton Beach thrive by encouraging new businesses, high-paying jobs to the commerce and technology part. But the best is yet to come. The new Brooks Bridge is a game changer. We will champion Around the Mound and push for a reinvigorated downtown by funding, fully funding the downtown master plan. Proper infrastructure is fundamental. So there's a lot of things that we are trying to do. Traffic, we're looking at those issues, but Round the Mound is going to be part of that solution. But why am I running again? Because together there's so much more to be done and that is why I'm running again. We're at a focal point. If we choose to grow or do we choose to stay stagnant? So if you love Fort Walton Beach like I do, I'm asking for your vote. So vote Kirby Locklear, City Council. Yes, indeed.
So you talk about how you want to fully fund the downtown master plan. Downtown master plan, I believe is a $50 million project, right? Tell us how we're going to do that in the next four years because your campaign says you want to get it done in four years.
Well, there is going to be a lot of ways to do that. We got to look at our priorities. That's the one thing that we've got. We've got a lot of big programs coming up and it is one of our strategic goals to put that on the list. So if it is a priority, we're going to fund it. Are you going to say I'm going to come up with $50 million right now? Maybe we have to phase that in. Maybe it'll be small chunks of it, but it will get done. It might be four years, it might be eight years, but we're going to get it done.
Thank you very much. Let me lower that microphone down a little bit for EMG.
Vertically challenged, not short. My name is EMG Moran. I'm currently council member and running for reelection as well. You've heard Nathan and Kirby mention a lot of things the city has accomplished over the past few years and it's going to go on. No matter who gets elected, it's going to go on. It needs to go on. A little bit about myself, I've been here since 1985. Married my wife 33 years ago, raised two sons here. I'm all about service. I don't think serving Fort Walton Beach is a part-time job. Council is not a part-time job. It's not just showing up twice a month and saying you're done. I serve, I put in over 30 days per year, serving statewide on various boards in the county level, the regional level and the state level. I'm a contractor by trade, have been for 35 years. I work with guys every day, men and women every day, the average working guy. And there's basic things they want in life. They want safety. They want safety for themselves and their families. They want to know while they're out on the job site, if something happens, their family will be safe. That's why I fully support our fire department and police department. You can't ask for a better group than those two. Over half of our firefighters are EMT qualified. The rest of them are ASL qualified, advanced lifesaving, not just basic. They come to you with a problem, they're going to fix it and certainly save your child, your spouse, your parents, because they continually train to do just that. These everyday folks, they want entertainment when they're not at work. That's why I fully support Recreation Department. There's something in this city for every age group. I was so happy when we got the pickleball courts to see folks my age and up after actually moving around every day, improving their own lives and having something to do. We've done the skate park for the younger kids who want to go do that so they're not doing it in the parking lots and on the streets, keeping them safe. With the tennis courts, the basketball and expansion of the rec department. Last year alone, the Recreation Department during the summer months on the traveling teams, over 38,000 players. They brought families with them. They rented hotel rooms. They bought meals. Over $3 million impact to our local businesses. Did they pay for the rec center? No, but they paid the businesses around us. Serving on the state level, which you should ask all your candidates and all your council members, are you going to serve on a state level? Are you going to Tallahassee? To explain the needs of this city to the legislators for the funding that we deserve to get our fair share of it. As Nathan pointed out, over the past four years, through my efforts, the mayor's and his and a couple of the council members, $11.5 million we brought back to this community to fix infrastructure problems. I am a nuts and bolts kind of guy. I do run a construction company. I do know how to budget a plan, how to lay out a project, finance a project and complete a project. I see the infrastructure of this city. Some of it downtown, we want to do it around the mound. Some of that infrastructure is over 80 years old. It'd be real nice to put a beautiful building on top of it and have the streets collapse under it. Doesn't sound like a good plan. So going to the state to get this money to repair the infrastructure, I find to be very important to keep our libraries funded and going so we all have something to go to.
Thank you. You can go ahead and clap and then I'll ask. You brought up a couple of things, Mr. Moran, I'd like to ask you about. You say you spend 30 days out of the year, travel around the state for the city. Do you, how much does that cost you?
Got to ask my wife that question. The city is kind enough to pay for hotel, subboarding and the least expensive way of getting there. Let me tell you, Miami is a long ways away by car.
All right.
If we choose to fly, we pay for it ourselves. Once we are at these, and we do go to Orlando, Jacksonville, Miami, the larger cities, any of you've been down to Orlando, Miami or Orlando for Disney World stuff, you know what meals cost there. City don't cover that. On average, I spend about $28,000 a year out of my own pocket just to travel for the city.
Let me ask you one more question about that travel. How does that, how's that process work? When I was on council, each council member got $1,000 to travel each year. Is that the same now?
I would not know. I've never put in a voucher to be reimbursed except for fuel when I put my city vehicle gas on my own credit card. City doesn't have a travel credit card.
So councilmen, you guys can nod over here if you know, can go wherever they want and put in for travel vouchers? I'm just curious.
If you're going on city business, not where we want to. It's got to be a city event and you're signing, or a state event and signing in for it to prove you have gone. It's not just to travel for the fun of it. If a spouse chooses to go with us, we cover the extra hotel expenses. The city does not cover that. They only cover the council member.
All right. Thank you very much.
My name is Larry Patrick and I want to thank the neighbors' family and the others that have helped put this together tonight. I know an event like this can be very time-consuming. And thank all the rest of you for coming and showing your interest in this city election that is coming up. I am a lifetime member or resident of Fort Walton Beach, other than about three years away from here after college. My family moved to Fort Walton Beach from Florala when I was 10 months old. So it's been my home and it will remain my home. My wife and I have six children and 10 grandchildren. Three of our children are here tonight. My wife is here somewhere unless she left and two of the grandkids are sitting back there. And I love Fort Walton Beach, like many of you do. I'd like to keep it the small-town atmosphere that it has. I have 50 years in the insurance, financial services and real estate industries. I've had 24 years at the Okaloosa County Planning Commission. 21 of those years consecutively, my peers have appointed me as chairman. I also served on city council in the 80s. I voted to buy the landing and the six acres that were part of that. It was intended to be a catalyst for growth, although over the years, the infrastructure hasn't changed significantly enough to implement the growth ideas and plans that were there in place. The biggest problem with downtown and its growth and why it's stifled is you can't have a four-lane highway running through a shopping district. I would, I'm really interested and motivated to continue what was started back then. I believe my experience on the city council, in business, on the Okaloosa County Planning Commission and other experiences in civic volunteer work, I will be helpful in planning that growth properly. Recently, there was a meeting downtown about what was the density going to be downtown? The density needs to be reasonable enough that it doesn't change the atmosphere of downtown and only improves it. I would love to be part of the city council that holds down your taxes and holds down the budget. As it's already been mentioned, the budget has increased from $32 million to $57 in the last 10 years. To me, that's an excessive number. I think there's other things that could have been done over the years to hold down costs rather than raise revenues to purchase and buy the things that have been done. And with that, I've got 13 seconds. That's my youngest back there hooting and hollering.
There she is. All right, Mr. Patrick, your qualifications are very stellar, there's no doubt about it. But as I was researching for tonight's event, I came across a social media post on concerned citizens south of Fort Walton Beach that said, "How can Larry Patrick be running for Fort Walton Beach City Council? He doesn't live in the city." I've also been privy to another letter that's been passed around that says that you do not live in the city. So let's clear it up right now.
I have two homes, one in Fort Walton Beach, which has been my home since 1984. It is my homestead. Supervisor of Elections Office has confirmed that qualifies me as Supervisor of Elections Office has confirmed that qualifies me as a candidate for city council. The house in Niceville will be sold this year.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Mike, come and help me. I got lots of height. Yes, sir. Okay. Good evening. Thank you all for having me, and my name is Debbie Riley. And before I get started, as always, I must, I must give honor to God, who is the head of my life, and got me on this journey. Also want to thank my parents, Frank and Gladys Riley, who are both deceased, and they can't be here tonight to help me continue on with this journey. Also want to thank Mr. Mike, the neighbors' family, and the venue. I need to gain ten more seconds, since I love to talk. Okay. I've lost ten seconds working with the mic. Anyhow, I'm homegrown, born and raised in Fort Walton Beach, Florida. And I'm proud to say that I attended the public school systems, Wright Elementary prior, and I went on to Fort Walton Beach High School, and I graduated from there. I fathered my education, I have a bachelor's degree, then I received a bachelor's degree from Troy University, also have a master's degree in social work, and I received that from the University of West Florida. It's such an honor for me to be here this evening, because first and foremost, I want to also thank you. I want to thank you, the citizens and the residents of Fort Walton Beach in Okaloosa County, for allowing us, all of the candidates, to be before you, so that you can meet and greet us, and you can talk with us personally. Because I'm one, and that maybe it's my social worker background or whatever, you know, I see names, but I like to match faces, and I also love talking with people. My career started early on in the social service field. I come from a family of seven children, and I have you to know, one of them with special needs. So my parents had their works cut out, and specifically my mother, because my father is a truck driver, and he was on the road most of the time, but he instilled, both of them, so many values and integrity in each and every last one of us. And so I'm so comfortable with telling you, I'm here before you tonight, I'm asking you for your vote, because I can promise you, I'm the type of person that I'm gonna work for you, you, the citizens. And I'm a very transparent person, extremely transparent. So all you have to do is understand that if I am voted and set on that council, you don't have to worry about the disagreements or whatever frustrations you have on fire assessments and whatever not. I love the city of Fort Walton Beach, I love you. And what I would like to do is make you a promise. If I sit on that council, I feel like we should bring it to the people. You are the voices. You are the voices. And I love listening to the voices. I've worked very hard in this community. I've worked at least a minimum of thirty years, working with families in this community. And not just specifically in the city of Fort Walton Beach, but I have worked throughout the county of Okaloosa County. I've been in homes, I've been talking with families, I've helped families, I've helped them believe in themselves, and also to understand that you can become self-sufficient, and you can, you can grow, and you can be anything in this world that you want to be. And my three seconds, this is over. Give me about two seconds. Well, you haven't asked me my question yet.
I don't think I do. Thank you very much.
I don't get a question.
I can give you a question if you want it.
Why don't you ask everybody else?
All right. I think you pretty much answered a lot of things we wanted to hear tonight. Mr. Riley, your qualifications are certainly impeccable, and you state you want to be a voice for those who don't have a voice. Tell us what that means.
To me, I can, being voiceless, I mean, you're feeling, you're living your everyday life, you're out there working hard, hard-working, tax-paying citizens, and you see the things that you feel could be corrected to make it where you can take care of your family and understand that your living is not in vain. And so for me, to be a voice for the people, is, I've seen it, I've heard it, I've felt the pain and agony of families that are struggling on a day-to-day basis, and specifically talking about workforce housing, affordable housing. And I really believe that we can do better. We also have assets and resources in the state of Florida that we can utilize, where we don't have to worry about having such a tight budget, where we can provide the needs for the citizens and the residents, tax-paying citizens of the city of Fort Walton Beach, because if we take advantage of what we have out there, and there's a lot of extremely good programs that we can take advantage of, and we can also try at least to satisfy the residents, where they're, they are feeling they're working hard and their taxes are being taken away from them. And I think that we can, we as a people, if we work together, we can resolve it, we can resolve that issue, and we can make Fort Walton Beach a better place to live, work, and play. And I love the city of Fort Walton Beach, I love the fire department, and I love, love, love the police department, I love Mr. Daniels Public Works, I love every division in the city of Fort Walton Beach.
Mr. Gareth Sterns, that might be a tough act to follow.
It is what it is. The alphabet is the alphabet. Good evening, everyone. My name is Gareth, can I take this out? My name is Gareth Sterns. I'm the history candidate. This is the old curfew clock, the first city bank. I'm usually the happy-go-lucky candidate. I'm gonna, I'm gonna not play that role a little bit tonight. I think I'm gonna, it's time for me to tell you who I think you should vote for tonight. So, my name is Gareth Sterns, I'm one of thirteen candidates for Fort Walton Beach City Council. That's a record, by the way. And that's a lot of decisions for you to have to wade through in determining who your four top candidates are. Well, I'd like to take a moment and make your decision a little bit easier for you tonight. I'm gonna do that first by talking about my least favorite subject, and that's the controversial fire assessment fee. And I do hope that this is the last election where we'll be talking about this infernal fee. It's torn a hole through the community. I want to make clear that my wanting to overturn the fee does not equate to a lack of support for our first responders. I wholeheartedly reject that narrative. Now, we all want the best-trained, most-well-equipped first responders for any emergency in this town, and I believe that we could have achieved that without this tax. And it is a tax, a tax that did not have the given consent of the people. And taxation without representation is theft, period. When given the chance to speak on the issue prior to its passage, twenty-seven out of thirty citizen speakers spoke out against it at City Hall. Then four of my opponents went and voted for it. Keep in mind, these folks were sent there to do the will of the people. I know that's why I'm running. These four are all on record as still being in support of the fire tax, even after the collection of more than 1,400 signatures. By concerned residents, all wanting the issue added as a referendum at the ballot box. It even appears the city is attempting to pump the brakes on the petition through legal maneuvers that are costing taxpayer money. I have real concerns about that. And for that reason, I will not be supporting Councilman Moran, Councilman Kelly, nor Councilman Locklear. I will also not be supporting formal councilperson Jamison for the same reasons. This whittles us down to nine candidates, still more than double the available number of positions being contested. Now, many of you may find that my views on the fire fee align pretty closely with those of the Fort Walton Beach Watch Group. And that's true, they do. In fact, in my private meetings with the group, I've discovered that I have more in common with them than I do not. So if you're basing your votes this election solely on who the Fort Walton Beach Watch Group is telling you to vote for, then you're closing yourself off to multiple candidates who want the same exact thing as you. And unfortunately, if you're also okay with that, then you're opening yourself up to a situation where you have actual council members who desire to completely disincorporate the city of Fort Walton Beach into Okaloosa County. That is not hyperbole on my part, and I want to speak it more plainly. Leader of the Fort Walton Beach Watch Group, Payne Walker, he would like to see the city of Fort Walton Beach be disincorporated completely and to be governed by the county of Okaloosa. That is his stated goal. I do, I am glad that I do not have the support of the Watch Group, and for that reason, I do not, I do not believe that you should be voting for those four candidates either. That leaves five, of which I am one, and I hope you get to know me tonight.
There you go. You guys probably don't know this, but I turned his microphone off. You know, I saw you had a whole 'nother page to go, that's kinda where I stopped you. Okay, so here's the question. Recently, read a post on one of our local Facebook groups, I think it might even been yours, which I love, by the way, and that person loves your Facebook group, but building a Facebook group does not in itself make a good candidate for city council. Did you see that post? Hmm, I did.
Missed that one?
No, I bet you did. Please share some of your experiences that would be the necessary qualifications to make you a decision-maker here in Fort Walton Beach.
That's a great question. Perhaps it doesn't. Did I turn my mic off this time? Perhaps it doesn't. Perhaps it does. Who's to say who's gonna make the best city council candidate? I heard a great answer tonight from Jason Harwell, who I think that you should vote for, by the way, tonight, and he doesn't, and he has a GED. He did a great job. You know, I can't say that I am the most qualified person in the world. I do have a teaching degree, I have a degree in political science with an emphasis in high school social studies teaching. I taught at a Title I high school for five years, I was a social studies teacher. I am very familiar with overcoming hurdles, situations with tons of variables that are completely unexpected. I am a voracious learner. I may not be the expert on policy for city government, but that's, it's something that I have a passion for, and I'm willing to learn and become an expert on it. So Jeff, I hope that you become the permanent city manager, and you all can quote me on that.
Would you say we save the best for last?
Talk about, talk about an act to follow. Yeah, I think you might turn it off. Thank you. I'm Payne Walker. Tough act to follow there. While Gareth mentioned me specifically, I understand we can have disagreements with each other and still love each other, love Gareth, love these guys. Oh, sorry, sorry. So a little bit, I'm gonna try to set a record myself tonight, I'm gonna try to be brief. Thank you, Mike, thank you, Bobby. I've been watching Fort Walton Beach city government for about three and a half years. It did start with the fire assessment fee. Since that time, I have continued to focus on their decisions, their decisions, their stewardship of our money, reasoning, rationale, taxes, and all of those things. I've been learning. Prior to me watching four years ago, I knew so little about the Fort Walton Beach city government, or any government for that matter. Forgot to tell you about, a little bit about myself. I'm a veteran, arrived here in 1991, got out of the service in 93, started real estate business soon thereafter. I have an office downtown since 2013, small business owner, veteran, volunteer in the community, also have served on the Ocean City Ride Fire Retirement Board. I love our firemen, I love our policemen. I think it can be done differently, I think it can be done more effectively. Is consolidation on the table? Absolutely. Want to explore those ideas, see what it means for taxpayers, and both in value and services that we can receive. I'm open to it, I'd be one candidate voting. The others would have to go along for any consolidation effort to actually happen. So I've been heading up, like Gareth, I've been, started a group about four years ago. Today, it has over 1,200 members, it's called FWB Watch Group. If you're not a member already, you can join it. You can also just watch it, it's all public, there's no, you don't, you don't have to join it, you can watch everything that goes on there just by visiting it. Also, to learn more about me, I created a website, I've been posting some videos, I'm much more, I'm much more comfortable speaking by myself instead of a group of, in front of a group of people, but I've put some videos there that will share some of my frustrations with what I've witnessed and experienced while watching Fort Walton Beach city government. So ask you to visit those sites, watch those videos, and if I align with your way of thinking, of good stewardship of your money and business decision-making, I'd ask for your vote.
Why did you ask my name?
Whoisttpaintwalker.com, sorry, it sounds bad there.
Hang on, I think I can answer that. So, you know, I gotta tell you, Mr. Walker, I don't know where to start here, I mean, let me just talk.
If this is not about a social media post, I'll be amazed.
Is this one of your campaign materials right here, super, what, Payne Walker?
Well, that's a, that's a combination, a friend of mine put that together, yes. That's from a birthday party, plus, yes, my city candidate.
I love that one. The only problem, it didn't have a thing.
Yes, I spoke with Mr. Lux about that. It made it out into the world.
So, Mr. Walker, you, your criticism of Fort Walton Beach is well-known. It just seems to me that you just don't have the, you never pass up the opportunity to say something bad about the city. And in fact, recently, the top post that comes up on FWB Watch Group is you questioning why anybody would want to live in Fort Walton Beach because of increased taxes and the lack of benefits. You've also on occasion called for disbanding of the city. Do you really feel that way? Do you want to disband the city?
Well, two-part question there. One was about the post, about why would you live in there. One of the things, as your representative, if I'm blessed to become your representative, I like exploring thoughts and ideas. So that process, that question, comment there was to generate thoughts, can we get fire services for more, for less money with greater service? I've studied and researched consolidation efforts throughout the United States, and it meets opposition mostly by those who benefit from it internally. Taxpayers support it, and they benefit from it. As far as the disbanding of the city, the consolidation effort, I don't mind saying publicly, as I have before, to consolidate the city to the point of efficiency, that where we use, what we're already paying as taxpayers, city taxpayers, pay into a bucket up at the county, they use that money. So I'd like to find out how we can work together so that the money we're already paying to the county can be used down here, instead of having another level of government that we, the taxpayers have to pay for. I would like to see it be done more efficiently and more effectively, and consolidation would be something I would like the city council, if I'm elected, to explore.
You bring up a good point. In order to get anything done in city council, you're gonna have to convince other city council members to vote for you. Just real briefly, tell us how you're gonna go about that.
Well, you know, I'm not opposed to saying upfront that I'm, if I'm elected candidate, I'm gonna start from what's known as a position of no. My finger's on the no button, and if someone wants to convince me to spend their money in one way or another, they're gonna have to convince me to a yes. So I don't mind when the vote's called and the hammer's down, and I push a no button, I'll be fine to say, "I stood by that no button, because I think it was the best choice for the citizens, taxpayers." They don't have to agree with me, we may be, it may, it's been 6-1 many times in the recent years. I don't mind being a no, and I don't mind being a yes if I support it and sponsor it, but I'm gonna have to be convinced to become a yes. All right, thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, here are your candidates for Fort Walton Beach City Council. You guys just go back to your tables, and please, if you want, if you have further questions, please feel free to visit the candidates at their tables.